I'm so happy today to have Terrence Hayes here. Thanks so much for coming, man.
No problem.
Yeah, you're the seventh candidate I've had. Not all those episodes are about running for city council, so I totally appreciate your time coming by today. And yeah, I was just curious, like, how, how is it right now, like, in the race? Like, there's just so many people, I imagine it's wild, but do you just focus on your district and kind of keep it to that and like, don't worry about the rest of the noise?
No, I get involved. I'm gonna be honest with you. I was at a District Two forum and it was like eighteen people. District Two is crazy. I thought, I think we're like twelve or thirteen in District One now, but I try to, I try to go and see what everybody's doing, get a sense of quite possibly where our city will be going, because I think each district will kind of have like a, like kind of some policy champions. And so I try to get ahead of that, build the right relationships. So I haven't got to like a District Four yet, which I think I need to, because I think District One and District Four, according to like the Vasquez Smith thing, I think we're, we're gonna vote the same, right? So I think that we need to pay attention to what's happening between one and four. So I think two and three is like, eh, we ain't gonna deal with y'all too much, so we'll see.
I never thought about that. I guess that is kind of the parallels between those districts, yeah. Yeah, and I was gonna tell anyone who's interested, if you're a city candidate, candidate that wants to come on, just hit me up. I reached out to you, but sometimes people hit me up. Whatever way you want to do it, just we'll make it happen.
Every time I meet folks, I'm gonna tell them about you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. It's tough, because there's like eighty people, you know?
Yeah, I think, what was the last count, seventy-seven?
Yeah.
I think somebody just told me yesterday, I, I don't keep up with that. I'm just like, every time somebody pop up in my district, they like, y'all got a new person. I'm like, well, happy for them. Like, I don't know what to do at this point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's cool, because there's so many personalities, but there's a lot of people too.
A lot, a lot of dope people, for sure.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so tell me, tell me about District One just for a little bit, because I was just gonna shout out East Portland and, you know, I talk about it on the show a lot, how it's just neglected and underserved and stuff, and, but yeah, talk about your district.
One is unique, like Eighty Second Ford is unique because it, I don't feel like it's had much political representation. I feel like it's one of them things where it got, it gets leveraged for a few votes and then it get ignored later. So I think the people are tired. They seem disinterested in a certain way, right? When I'm talking to community members, they're like, oh, yeah, I heard. And I'm like, no, this is a big deal, because these folks is your neighbors, right? Like, I literally live in District One right there, and I guess we all do, but like, I don't think people register that, because they historically never got that. So I think District One is way more moderate, I think, than, than like, in like, two or three years. I think folks are everyday, hardworking people. They want both the ability to love and care for people, but they also want their sidewalks clear, right? They don't think you have to exchange one for another. That's why I love that I live in that district at this time, because I get to approach issues holistically, instead of like the extremity that we usually do in this city. So District One is unique like that. Folks are hardworking, everyday people that just expect to be heard. They're not, I don't think they're a very political district. I think District One is just like, get up to politicians, like, get your ass up there and do your job. Listen to what we gotta say, make it so we can live good lives, and that's what we expect. The song and dance don't really, it don't really work for them, because they'd be like, ah, that's cute, but what are you gonna do? So I love that district.
Yeah, it is. It's funny, because I talk about it a lot on here. I like, it's like, the more east you go, I totally agree with you, the more people are just real and just working and like, because it's harder, like, the inner city, like, the closer you go to like downtown and inner east side and stuff, it's just like, a lot of wealthy people that, you know, it's like,
No compromise, they got their positions, and you can't tell them nothing.
Yeah, cool.
Enjoy that.
So yeah, tell me about, like, before you got into the race, because I just think, like, I told you before, your story is just so compelling. Like, it's cool to see somebody like you running.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it is interesting, because being a formerly incarcerated person, I went to jail at twenty, nineteen to twenty, I always forget, I'm getting old. But I went to jail for thirteen years, twelve years, eight months, but I think thirteen sounds cooler, right? And during that time, I had just decided to become a better version of myself, right? And I think sometimes when I'm talking about restorative justice and criminal justice reform, because of the extremity of our city, we usually think that's like an anti-police narrative. It actually has nothing to do with police. Restorative justice has nothing to do with police at all. This is about community and people coming back to their community. So that was my journey coming home, right? I became a, like, a poster board for restorative justice, because under Mike Schmidt's focus of restorative justice, Senate Bill eight one nine came, and I was the first person to get that applied. So I went from this really, like, tough criminal record to nothing. So now I have this unique opportunity to leverage my experience and my knowledge, coming through the criminal system, getting a job in the trades, which, listen, getting my electrical license, I would say was like a big part of my success, because when I came home, I had a job within two days, because who don't need a good electrician? I don't even know if I was good, and I just had a license. And so being able to come home with that license and work hard, have an amazing wife, right? Like, how she stood up and gave me a shot was incomparable, right? You gotta have support in your life when you, when you're trying to transition out of a box into like a big old circle or globe, right?
You need that support, yeah.
Listen, I struggled with a cellphone.
Yeah.
Cellphones was tough. So when we're talking about like these heavier issues of people coming home, nobody's like, hey, they're not gonna know how to use a smartphone, right? So you gotta have the love of strong people. And so that love of, from my wife and my family and my children, allowed me to really pursue the next level dreams. And then my, I started my own electrical company, it started to grow. I realized I was ill-equipped for that growth, because I never really took time in being apprentice in business. I just knew how to work, right? I just worked hard. And so I quit. I quit. I went to work for Ray Moore Construction as a field engineer. I started learning how to run projects. I started learning how to look at margins and understand business and read contracts. And then I had a unique opportunity, the Coalition of Black Men actually started the company that I own, right? They wanted to start, start, they wanted black people to start standing up black companies and supporting them. And so I originally started off just helping them grow the company, and then one day they was like, look, we tired. We gotta figure out who's gonna take the company. I'm like, me? Like, what are y'all talking about? I done did everything. And so we came up with an agreement. I bought Restore Nuisance Abatement from them, which at that time had a contract with TriMet to do the work on the vision. So I had this one little contract, it wasn't little, but it was new, right? And I didn't have nothing on the other side of that, but I had a lot of community support. And through that, I've been able to get here, right? Then I decided as this new setup came in, I was like, you know what? I can bring back a black voice that historically has been silenced, right? I, I do feel like the ultra progressive left is what I call them. I do feel like they were able to steal the black narrative for their own gain. And, and everyday black folks rarely couldn't even speak up and say they disagreed or not, right? Or that they agreed, because it became normal to just say, this is what black people want, this is what black people feel. And we watched millions of dollars go out in the name of black people in the last four years, and black people then become more wealthy, then become better sustained. Our violence went up in our communities. And so I feel like as male, as well-meaning as some folks was, they, they came in speaking for an experience that they didn't have, right? And it didn't free black people to become a better version. And I do believe that when black folks do well in our community, all people do well in our community, right? So I just decided I'm gonna be a part of bringing that voice back and standing with the community as a whole by allowing a black voice to be independent of, of these politics as I get into politics, you know what I mean? But just want to empower in those voices. So that's how I got here. It wasn't no straight path. It was wiggly. It was weird. It was ups and downs. But now I have no criminal record. Now I still can speak with lived experience. I sit on the oversight group. I work with police officers every day. I'm like the dude that was just in prison, and now some of the closest people and friendships I have is officers, which allowed me perspective and challenge, to challenge some of the norms. So I'm able to be out here, working with folks on every, on all of the spectrum and building relationships, and I don't think there's nobody like me. Certainly ain't nobody went to prison for all those years and then have been able to come out and accomplish what I have. So I feel really grateful to this city. So I'm running because I love this city.
Yeah, no, that's such a, such a cool story. I was thinking when you were saying that, like, did it feel, because I, I love talking to business owners who come on here. I wish, you know, I've done freelance work, but I've never built my own business like you have. But during those four years you were talking about, did you feel like it was an uphill, like, anti-business battle that you had to kind of fight through or?
No, because I'm a black man, right? The, the narrative, though the narrative was stolen, the narrative wasn't anti-me, right? The narrative allowed me into spaces to have, to get real cool opportunities. The, the problem was for me, is that once I got the opportunities, there was no real support on the other side. It was, as far as that space, it was just people going, hey, we wanna champion your blackness, but we're not gonna really help equip you to have success, right?
It'll get you to start and then, yeah.
Because, because then I'm a box you can check, and I'll feel really good around myself. And then when it's over, if you fail or not, it's really not my problem, right? And so, no, I didn't feel anti, anti. I felt like I, it was a unique moment where even people I didn't, I didn't agree with about everything. I was really grateful for the body of work that allowed me into these spaces. But now, I mean, as my business grow, I certainly realize that the narrative, the anti-business narrative, it hits everybody in the mouth, if, if you play it out the right way. It's not just this perception of this ultra white man sitting in his house hiding. It's everybody who might make a little bit more than other community members, right? And when we play that against each other, all community suffers, right? People like, I don't care, you know, I was thinking about Starbucks, and I was thinking about how, how Starbucks refused to allow unionization. And I don't agree with that, right? They should stand with their people. But then I said, when we start, this is Portland for you, when we start picketing and mishandling Starbucks, there's twenty employees inside of that building, right? And in order to prove a point to this thing that we never see, real people are being hurt and impacted. We are even expecting them to quit their jobs when they really can't even afford to live in this city. So I think those extremities play out to normal people, and they rarely hurt the people that they're meant to hurt. Because once you hit a billion dollars, what can a regular person do to stop you from surviving every day? But if I, but if I close down Walmart, right, if I close down Walmart and those hundred people have to find a job. If I close down Target, those hundred people have to find a job. So when we talking about the anti-business sentiment, because you think that, that allowing somebody to steal because they homeless is actually doing them a service, but then a hundred people lost their jobs from Walmart and Target. So what about those individuals, right? I don't, the, the concept of big business outside of the small person doesn't mean anything to me. I'm looking at the small people inside of big business, and I'm saying those people need that work every day.
Yeah, that's funny, because I think about that stuff too, like, and I'm, like, people probably like roast me for this, but I, I love Starbucks. I go to Starbucks every day.
We all still go. They ain't closed down, brother.
But it's, that's what I think about too. I'm like, there's the people working in there, like, they're, you know, they're all super nice to me, at least the one I go to, and I just think they, Walmart, like you two mentioned, they get these big, like, bad reputations, like the one on Eighty Second we had is now gone. And like you said, that's hundreds of people that depended on that for their livelihood, but, um, yeah, it's interesting. I'm, I'm curious to more, tell me more about your, so how'd you get to your current business from that, or is that what you were talking about?
No, so how, you mean the growth of my current business? Because when, when I took over the company that the Coalition of Black Men started, that is, I still have that business.
Okay.
And we just grew it, right? I seen a need in traffic control. Ray Moore gave me an opportunity. And they was like, look, traffic control is a pathway to construction, right? So we wanna give you an opportunity to develop out, to develop that out as a portion of your company. And so I took it, because I'm taking all opportunities, right? I took it, and I had a lot of support. Talking about just opportunity from a decently sized construction company, talking about fast pay, making sure that we can cover payroll by quickly paying us. Ray Moore is a legit model of what bigger companies can do to positively impact small companies. And so we knew that there can be a pathway for formerly incarcerated men and women. It can pay really good, right? And so with their support, we've been able to, to do it. Then I got a contract with Washington County. And you know, what, what I love about that is that I get to take all these individuals that historically may not liked at each other because of gangs, and then I throw them out in the boonies, right? And it come with all this expectation, and then they have to kind of lean on each other, right? Because they, that we've been told, we go to Washington County, it's all racist, they ain't gonna like you. But they build relationships, and then what happened is those individuals that work at Washington County, which is primarily white man, then you have all these black people, black men generally, and all of a sudden, they have to depend on each other.
Work together, and yeah.
Ain't that interesting? And then all of a sudden, everything we thought we knew about each other goes away, because we gotta work together. So when my employees have came back, and then the people at Washington County have came back to me, everybody has admitted that what they think they knew about each other just didn't hold up. So that's when I'm looking at the world, I'm looking through the experience of people in my company every day, right? And that allows me to grow and it encourages me in my growth. So that's why we here, we are, we are. It's somebody believing in me.
Yeah, it's, it's cool too, because that, one reason I love talking to business owners is because, like, you already mentioned it a couple times, but like, just people getting into elected office that have an understanding of how to do payroll and like, survive on the money you make and stuff. It just seems so important and something we don't necessarily have right now.
Well, most people, and we see it now, let, let me be real clear. I always say we, we lack execution in politics, right? So we plant a couple hundred trees and nobody figure out how they gonna get watered. You know, think about that. No, no person who's ever executed a project would have missed irrigation.
Right.
No, no person would have missed, how do you feed the trees later? Because they under, they would have mapped that out. So we do need people who actually can execute in, 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 in politics, in our city council, because they can actually see from A to Z, right? And one of the things I see that I look, I'm like, oh, we haven't, you know, it is, you know, what they say, forty thousand dollars or something to build, or four hundred thousand, some astronomical number to build a studio in a building, right? And I'm just like, that's because y'all don't know construction, and when these private firms come to y'all with these extreme numbers, you don't have no reference point to challenge them. Like, if you came to me and said it costs four hundred thousand dollars to build a studio in a building, I would tell you, you full of it. And then I'll put that, that bid back out.
Yeah.
And eventually, somebody who can do the work and not cost the city a billion dollars will come and do the work.
Yeah, that's, and that's something there, I think the city and the county, they're both notorious for like the square footage price. It's like, it's like insane, yeah.
They don't understand, right? How could they?
Right, and they'll just pay it and,
Oh, because it ain't their money. It's not their money.
No, that's really cool. And I think the, for whatever reason, I don't know why the graffiti removal part of that, like, stuck in my, of your business stuck in my mind. I just think that's interesting. But I think, like, all of the things that you do, it seems like, I don't know if you call it vertical or horizontal integration, but that seems like a cool collection of like services that you guys do.
And it allows us, again, my, the heart of what I'm trying to do is to prove that when you put economics in spaces, that people's lives are better, right? It ain't like I can pay somebody a million dollars, but if I can show you that there's a pathway for you, you to earn your own way, right? Through just opportunity, then I think I can exemplify for even companies that still have created that no felony type of boundary. I can show them and prove to them, like, these are some of the hardest working people, and when we get them working, all of our communities become safer.
Yeah.
Right? So I don't know, somehow I've been really blessed to put that all together. But I just want to prove that folks that getting, that's coming home, they don't, they don't need us to pave the way particularly. They just need the opportunity to pave their own way. So even with the graffiti, right? Like, it don't take a rocket science to clean graffiti, scientists to clean graffiti, but it takes a little bit of work, and it's gonna take a little bit of courage, right? Because you don't know who graffiti you removing that day, right? And so I go to the folks that I know have courage, right? You rarely meet a formerly incarcerated person that ain't got a little gumption about theyself, you know what I mean? So I'm able to use those natural skills and talents to grow out people. And so that's my only focus. I want to develop people. People say people over profit all the time. I always say, let's go look at the margins, right? Because my margins will tell you if I'm truly people over profit. But most people that say that just means that they will make profit on people, because they'll leverage their, their past in order to get them into spaces.
Yeah, when you were saying that, that on day two, when you got out, you became electrician?
Well, I had a job. I became an electrician inside, but I got a job within two days.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah, like, so they had some kind of electrician apprenticeship or training or something in there?
Yeah, so at Snake River Correction Facility in Ontario, Oregon, they, I mean, it was literally like five years before I was getting out, five or six years. I was like, hey, we're gonna start this apprenticeship program. And they did. And I was one of the few people that can get in, and I had to sing and dance and get in there. But I finally got in there, and, and it was only about four people at the time. Out of like, couple thousand people in a building, like, four of us got that opportunity. So just imagine, if we can create that for all those thousands of people, we could have helped change their lives and their trajectory, so.
Yeah.
Yep, inside, brought it home.
This is maybe kind of a weird question I just thought of, but, uh, because I'm always asking people about remote work and working from home. Was that like a, do you notice something like that, like, people that were incarcerated, just being willing to work like way harder than, like, the modern day?
Well, their grind is different, right? Think, think about this. You sit in this six by four box for years, right? And they pay you a good wage at seventy-five dollars a month. That's a good wage to work your tail off, right? Then all of a sudden, somebody's offering you something different. And listen, when you first get home, you're not necessarily registering that you're still underpaid, because rent is gonna kick your tail. Utility is gonna take, kick your tail. Usually, that's not our first problem when we get home. First problem is just getting a job. So when we start making money, we like, damn, I went from seventy-five dollars a month to a thousand dollars a week or every two weeks. Like, that's a win, right? And so, yeah, they grind as harder, but they're fighting for something that most people don't have to fight for, and that's their freedom, right? Think about that. They are fighting to stay free.
They have a way, way bigger motivation than most.
Way bigger motivation, and that's why they're willing to prove theyself. They're willing to go harder. And that's why even the concept of not hiring formerly incarcerated people, it's nonsense. You're gonna get the most loyal people. Think about how gangs work, right? You literally, knowing your heart is all bullshit, but you so loyal, you're willing to risk your life for it. That is the character that exists in these individuals. When we give them a positive outlet to that loyalty and that respect and all that, they become the most amazing people I've ever worked with. I would not trade my commitment to hire formerly incarcerated people, even if that means I will be rich tomorrow, because it's the people that I impact and I get to build with every day that makes it worth it, because it's tough. It's not easy, I tell you that, yeah.
Awesome. Um, let me see here. I was gonna ask you, I had mentioned this before, but did you, with the graffiti removal stuff, you, did you, you heard about this King of Graffiti raid, raid and stuff? But you were joking like that takes your business out.
You know, you, you joke off, you joke off camera, because I don't care if somebody be quoting you later. But I did joke, like, man, if he the king of graffiti, that's profit margins that go away, right? Nah, I mean, you know, I understand, even the way we track graffiti in our city is to deal with it long-term, right? They have us take very specific pictures that help them track individuals and create, you know, create cases. And so it's weird, because I have formerly incarcerated people, incarcerated people taking the pictures, right? That's ultimately might send somebody to jail, but they just happy they not going to jail, you know what I mean? But, yeah, they, they called, listen, I think the city is gonna, is moving back in a direction where they want a clean and safe city. And I think that no matter how we've, we've made Cinderella stories out of, out of certain things, people are tired, man. People, people want you to be creative. They want you to, to be able to live your life, but, but you don't get to bully people along the way. And when you spray paint small businesses and when you spray paint people homes, to me, that's bullying. Most, most mom and pop shops cannot afford what it costs to remove graffiti.
Yeah, over and over and over.
Over and over again, right? You're dig, you're literally digging into their profit margin. So for me, it's like, we make a living on moving graffiti, but I don't, I do not do private homes and stuff. If we do it, generally, we just do it for free or at extremely discounted price, because I know, like, this ain't Adidas, right? This ain't Nike. This is mom and pops just trying to survive. So I don't want to come and demand more for them than what they have when somebody else did some stupid stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I just thought it was funny, because I, I think it's weird too, because I was looking at the photos and like, even Nathan Vasquez, who's on the show a while back, he, they had photos of him like pointing to these like gas cans and like spray paint cans and stuff. And it's funny to me, because like, I knew taggers, like, when I was in my twenties, they would tag and stuff, and it, it's also seen as like an artistic thing and a cultural thing, and so it's weird to me, but I also understand that, yeah, a lot of cities like San Francisco and us are trying to like combat it and stuff.
It doesn't feel like the same artistic expression, right? I think when I was younger, right, when I was in my twenties, when you seen spray painting, it was a love, it was an art in there, right? You could see the, the, the process play out, right, at that level. Right, wrong, or indifferent, when you looked at it, you was generally odd, right? You was like, damn, that is a creative person. What are they doing? They should be in a gallery somewhere. And I think in a long way, we've lost that. And, and even, I think it's become a form of destruction too, right? I think we took away from expression and a sense of like, I'm gonna stand up, like it had purpose and meaning, and now I think it's just destructive. And again, I'm less concerned about like how you do some big city property than how you do a mom and pop shop, right? It's all wrong, but the city can remove it, right? They can afford it. The O-Da could do it. But, you know, mom and pop, they, they can't do it. So I think for me, it, it lost that artistic love when it start harming people that would have never done them no harm. Can't fix anything. You mad at the government, why tag my building? You don't prove anything to the government there.
Yeah, I totally agree, yeah, because that's, that's the one thing, yeah, like I said, I, I do think it's artistic and all that stuff, but yeah, when it comes to small business, it's like,
You don't get to do that.
Yeah. All right, let me ask you, put all this into one question of, because there's so many different candidates asking about the stuff, but do you feel like, as far as public safety in Portland, we need more police, more Portland street response? Do you think they're both effective? Like, how do you feel about all that stuff?
I know, that's a question. No, but this is why it's not loaded. I'll start there. It, it seems to always be presented as a loaded question, because people consistently insist that it has to be one or the other, right? I think we can have a best practice police force, meaning that per capita, we have the amount of officers that is shown to protect the city of our side, of our size, and simultaneously develop and build out PSR in a way that it becomes a legit alternative to police showing up, right? And I just don't believe that those are at war with each other. We like to build that narrative. We like to say, less police, more PSR, or PR, PSR can't answer for violence, we need more officers, and that's a problem with our city. Instead of us going, we can both have a healthy police force that both can do their job every day and be held accountable, while simultaneously developing PSR out to deal with calls that we do not want our officers at. I do not want police at mental health calls. I don't think it's fair to that individual or police for that matter. I think we get in it to these bad situations, because we don't have a way to get folks like PSR to handle the mass amount of those, those calls. So I think PSR has to continue to get developed out. I think this concept that tomorrow, PSR can have the ability to answer the calls that police answer every day is pure nonsense, right? And usually politicians, folks, big mouth folks like myself, they feel like they have to lean in these extremities, because whoever they're answering to demands these extremities without really understanding. I work in public safety every day. I actually know what I'm talking about when it comes to these subjects. And I'll tell you, I don't, I do not want police officers being mental health specialists. All this concept of training them every day, I don't want officers playing psychiatrists. I think PSR needs to be developed out in a way that we can respond holistically. And I'll give you one more thing. PSR is not the end all to this work. There are community-based organizations every day doing this work, making theyself available. So even if PSR today doesn't have the ability to grow that fast, let's look at investing in community-based organizations that specialize in mental health, right? And that way, they can get the training needed to respond to these calls, right? Like, we need more, yes, PSR, police response need more people and more cars and more development. But until we can do that, let's bring everybody else into this, right? Let's help organizations that's committed to the same work, work, grow and develop and meet those needs, right? So to answer very clearly, I think it's both. I think we're about four hundred people under in policing. And before the, before the abolitionists kick my tail, okay? What I'm talking about, me and Paul was talking about this, my brother, what I'm talking about is that when you work a sixteen-hour shift, you're probably not the best version of yourself. Somebody is gonna work those shifts, Andy. And we have more money going out. It's not fiscally responsible to, to do a million in overtime, right? Because those, there's still officers on there, right? So it's a twofold. You don't get the best version of officers when you overwork them, right? And then it's not fiscally responsible, because we're overpaying, not overpaying, because they deserve their work. We're putting out more than if there was another body to fill that gap, right? So when I talk about increasing police, it's because I'm talking about not overworking other officers, because we don't get the best version of them. I am not the best version of me when I work. I am not the best version of me when I work sixteen hours. Leave me the hell alone. I'm tired, right? Officers are still human. So if we want the best version of them, we need to make sure when their shift is over, they go their butts home, they spend time with their family, they go to sleep. Like the rest of us get to do, and then they be their best version in the morning when their shift come. I don't want our officers working double shifts. At all. I think it's one of the most dangerous things that we're doing with this anti-police sentiment. It is not a, holding people accountable to overwork people and put our community at risk. And I do believe that over um, police overworking puts everybody at risk. What I do, and I do believe we need officers that can fill those gaps. Now, P S R, though we wanna be champions, they have a lot of work to do. They have a lot of growing to do. They have a lot of development to do. And we need to give them the funding and the support so they, that they can become everything. We need to go back to the negotiation table. We need to make sure that their bargaining agreement is opened up and expanded. If we want them to be in our minds, like they, they can't even transport, right? Like, think about that.
That's my one complaint.
Everybody wants them to be the champion of mental health, and they can't even take you from the home to the hospital. So guess who has to do it? It's either gonna be the police or a taxi, right? That mean you have to wait for a taxi. That mean you have to hope that there's no episode inside it. You see what I'm saying? So when people screaming, I'm like, we gotta get back and give them the power, the authority and, and the money they need to actually be the best version. If we clearly know it's a mental health situation, I don't want police to show up at all.
Yeah. No, I, I, I agree with pretty much all that. Um, and that was the one thing that like um, the Portland P B B really got knocked in that DOJ investigation was the mental health stuff. So it's like, it's all totally valid to me. I completely agree with you. And, and like, yeah, I think that's the goal of when P S R was created is to complement each other, you know?
Not be enemies. In, in real life, they're not enemies. Just politicians seems to pit them against each other.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. Um, uh, let's see here. I was gonna ask you about, you were kinda laughing this before, but the Grant High School is doing this pilot program where they ban phones for kids. And I believe right now it's only Grant, but they're, they just started like collecting comments from the students, which I guess, I'm guessing they're, the kids are not happy about that. But I'm just curious like your opinion on that.
Yeah, um, is there a context? Is there a reason they doing it?
I mean, the whole, the whole general thing is that they'll be able to focus more, they're less distracted.
Yeah, that's nonsense. So, so first of, first of all, listen, um, Portland Public Schools a little while ago brought down the standard of graduation, right? And did you, did you see their reasoning for that?
Uh, I don't remember.
Their reasoning is because black students can't keep up. They are not meeting the minimum standards. So you think that I believe that the people that, instead of deciding what is separating black kids from the basic standards, which ain't high in the first place, and figuring out the gap that exists in learning to get them to the minimum standards, your answer to that is to bring that standard down. How does that ever help black kids? Right? Think about that. How does that help? So, yeah, I don't think them, them investing and talking about taking cell phones from kids is something that we should even be buying into. I think we need to be challenging the narrative that black kids don't have the intelligence to meet the minimum standard, right? Because that, to me, is a, is a weird form of prejudice racism, right? When I, because think about, I'm gonna tell these little black kids, you can be everything you wanna be. I don't believe you have the ability to meet the minimum qualifications for graduation, so I'm gonna bring that standard down. But the rest of the world doesn't bring that standard down. The rest of the world does not care that Portland Public Schools decided that it's black kids wasn't enough and that they would not invest in um, bridging the gap, whatever gap is happening with young black students, they won't invest there. So to be talking about cell phones, like you'll hear me say often, like a lot of this stuff is just distractions to me, right? You not gonna tell, like at this stage, you gonna tell, if my kid is eighteen years old, you think, and I'm depending on that kid, and anything can happen, I'm gonna need that kid, you think the answer is to take the cellphone?
Yeah, that's, I hear that a lot too from people, from parents, yeah.
That's nonsense, right? So if you have an issue with kids being distracted on their phone, which is kinda crazy, cuz every adult I know stay on their phone. It's a weird thing how we try to push things on our kids that we don't do every day. Like, I want, I wanna, I wanna catch them um, and see how much time they spend on their, on their phones. I wanna, I want to literally pull, pull um, whoever decided to start with Grant, and I wanna say, give us the used minutes on your phone. And I'm gonna argue that they're probably sleeping six hours and using their phone the rest of the time.
Probably right. It's a good point to like, like, if you wanna see that, like, set the example, cuz you're right, like adults probably do it at work all day too, and you know, so.
All day long. So, yeah, I just, I think it's a distraction. I don't care about no, Portland Public Schools to me, um, anytime you decide that black kids don't have the ability to meet the same standards as, as white and Hispanic kids and Asian kids. Um, to me, you have a leadership problem. And I definitely will be asking questions of that leadership the moment I sit in office.
Is there any, I'm curious, is there any other stuff with P P S that you would?
Nah, nah, that was big enough for me to, to be my focal point. Generally, I, I haven't historically think public schools has gotten what it needed to be the best version of itself in our country in the first place. So I certainly um, probably can look at a lot of stuff they do and be critical of it. But that one, for me as a black man, that come through Portland Public Schools, I was like, this is the type of bullshit that when I'm sitting in class, I'm thinking, I'm gonna graduate anyway. So that I don't, yeah, yeah, I don't have to, yeah, I'm gonna be on my cellphone, cuz ain't no standard. And I probably can learn more on my phone about how to survive in real time and in real life than I can learn sitting in this class, because you don't believe I have the ability anyway.
Totally, yeah. Or, or even like, you know, I don't know, I, I don't do crypto or anything, but I mean, you could make, start making money on your phone like while you're.
How you gonna tell these kids who's making millions of dollars in social media to get rid of their phones? Enjoy that ride. I think, I think, I think if, if they starting that with Grant, they're just bored or something. I don't know what's up. I think we just keep finding stuff to bring attention to instead of dealing with the real issues like the fact that we are failing to graduate at the highest levels, our students. And we're loo, and we're not even giving them healthy transitions into life or healthy choices between college and the trades. We're still saying that the key to wealth, or you live in a good life, is college, when the numbers is saying, that's just not true. Right? People coming out and going right into the trades are owning homes and businesses with no debt. Well, not the home part, but businesses and all that with no debt, then college kids is. I have a daughter in college. I love her. She's gonna be a psychologist. She's amazing. That's expensive. I have a son who's already prepping to go into the trades. We did the math and he will own his home before my daughter do, and she's about five years older than him. When she's done with school, he will be buying his first home.
That's crazy, yeah. I'm, I'm totally on that same page as you, cuz I didn't go to college now. I'm always talking about it on here of like, I saw all my siblings get into this ton of debt and uh,
Have fun.
And I didn't wanna do that, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't need, I mean, I went to jail, but I never, I never thought, like, even for me, before I went to jail, I graduated high school and went to Western Oregon University. I was uninterested. I was just told it was the only way. But I never wanted that, right? And now I had to go to jail to get into the trades. And now, to be quite honest, and I say this humbly, no one that I, that went to college from, with my generation is out earning me.
So I believe it, yeah.
So you can't tell my sons that's the way.
Yeah, cuz so many, yeah, like you said, the trades, it's pretty, it's a pretty straight path to make six figures. Yeah. Yeah. I wish I would've done it, you know, honestly. Um, um, let me, a couple more questions here. Do you have, like, are you totally happy with this city council format? Was there, is there anything you would change about it? I know it's new to everybody, but yeah.
We don't know. I don't really, I'm still trying to understand rank choice voting, to be honest with you. I think that is, it could quite possibly be problematic. I don't know yet. People, um, the, the very learned in this city seems to think it's the best method. And I don't really understand. It could be really cool though. I mean, I don't know. Um, I don't, I don't know. I think that, that we're still waiting to see how the city council that's here today plays out the rules and regulations, right? How they, how they kinda form it. I think it's, that's interesting to me. Um, we still gotta figure out what a city council president will look like and what it'd be the duties, or even what's the mayor? And how this, you know, city manager will work out in relation to city council. Like, I wanna know how much impact would city council truly have over who sits in that seat and how do we manage that? So, um, people, it's new. We don't know. It's not politics. It's normal, right? Cuz there's no bureaus, thank God, cuz now we can separate that and just have a manager over, then we can do our jobs every day. So I think everybody gotta learn how we gonna work together and play politics. I hate to say it like that, but it's still true, right? Like, done playing with words, we still wanna have to learn how to get along. So I'm interested to see how you put twelve folks, especially most people has never even dealt at the city level at all. They just really care about this city and want the best for it, how we work together, especially because we're, a lot of us is sitting on total opposites of like public safety and all that type of stuff. So, no, I'm not, I don't have no knock on it yet. Not yet.
You gotta like try it out first.
I think we're a year or two before even the public should be ready to kick our tails, right? It's gonna take some time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I agree with most of, most of that, actually. Um, um, what are your kinda top issues that you would focus on?
Yeah, so, so my whole thing is clean, safe and affordable, right? I think safety wise, we have to deal with the police and community narrative. We have to figure out a way to rebuild trust there. We have to continue or double down in our investment in community-based organizations being fundamentally a key to public safety, right? Not like this secondary thought, but a true key, P S R being an example of our need to invest in alternative methods. But I also think we need best practice in our police force. We need to make sure that we have enough officers for the size of our city to police correctly and that we have heal, healthy accountability measures, right? We, we have to make sure that everybody gets due process. And I think we've been so frustrated with some of the behaviors from our officers that we're going to an extreme where we're gonna lose good officers instead of working together. So for me, public safety is rebuilding or newly building um, community and police relationships and supporting them in a way that gets us safe communities um, holistically. Especially, um, I would love to see C B O's, community-based organizations start seeing the level of funding that we see in other places, for sure. Um, so that's day one for me. I wanna begin to have those conversations um, with other city council folks. Um, I think for me cleanliness, again, my company removes graffiti. I think that this city has to be holistically, not biased, in where it sends people to clean up every day. As a, as a company that does do graffiti removal, I know for sure that there's deeper investments in downtown for graffiti removal and cleanup than areas in East Portland. And I think that's unfair to East Portland. And I wanna challenge city, city council to make sure we have a holistic approach to cleaning our city that's not creating biases for any district, right? I think we need to commit to hiring small companies out of those districts to serve those districts. Imagine when we got two or three companies that live in one, two, three and four, that service one, two, three and four. I think it just becau, because those are their communities. I think they would love to continue to clean and, and take care at the highest levels. So cleanliness is important for our communities. We know that it helps bring, it helps with public safety and morale altogether, right? And I wanna talk about, again, affordability. For me, affordability is not the conversation of like affordable housing particularly or like subsidized housing. It's about getting people at a place where they can actually afford to live in this city on their own. If I subsidize housing, it's not really affordable. It's just subsidized. I cannot stand on my own, right? We have a whole generation of young people that's coming out with a different view of the world. They don't see the world in, in a couple square feet. They see it in China, in Europe, right? They see the world through the internet and the big picture. And I think we have to give them a real path um, to entrepreneurship, a real path to um, the middle class, which everybody keeps saying going away. But I think when you stop focusing on the, focusing on the trades, of course they go away, cuz the trades help build it, right? So that's what I'm looking at affordability wise, getting people at a place where they can afford to live in this city.
That's great, yeah. And I was also gonna ask you, would you, what would you do if anything, or, or just what's your opinion on the relationship with the city and the county? Cuz it's so frayed and. And yeah, like you mentioned before we started the joint office, like I know they're going through this new agreement right now that's kinda been delayed, but um, yeah, just what's your opinion on that stuff?
Yeah, I mean, you got the intergovernments, intergovernmental agency agreement or agreement. What I think is interesting, because we do this really well. We just keep creating agreements in different agencies that's supposed to answer for the problem in the agreement and the agency that came before it, right? But with no solutions. Um, but I honestly think it's because most people that sit in those seats do not, most, not all, but most of them don't actually know how to execute. And most of them is actually more politically driven in their decisions than actually what's in the best interest of our homeless community. I'll give you one, and people kill me for this, but I'm gonna state it on the record. Putting millions and millions of dollars into tents instead of developing housing or subsidizing rooms and housing for homeless people. Nonsense to me, right? So when I see that, I go, yeah, you ain't never been homeless. You actually believe it's hard for a homeless person to afford a tent? That's nonsense. You don't see a lack of tents out there. But I think, I think it's because political pressure and lack of knowledge that they think that's a reasonable solution to our homeless crisis, is to keep them homeless. Cuz the tent is not shelter. It's just a covering, right? And so for me, I'm looking and I'm going, if we're gonna work together, right? Then we have to be reasonable in our approach. And we have to make sure that we're actually impacting the community that we say we represent. And that goes back to my saying that I believe the black narrative got hijacked. The homeless narrative is being hijacked in the same way, and it does not represent the best interest of people that are homeless. We could have built out another safe rest village.
Yeah. It's been so long, that's what, yeah, that's what drives me crazy too. It's like four years of this, of just handing out these tents, when we could have built shelters this whole time, or just open shelters.
Just open shelters. Listen, when I did, um, when I did, um, I volunteered as a city worker, I volunteered at one of the um, cooling shelters, I think that's what we call it. And a hundred people about came in from, and I, I was in East Portland, and they didn't argue. They didn't fight.
Yeah.
They opened that shelter up, over a hundred people came in. They got some coffee. They got a snack. They sat down, they charged their cell phones and they got some sleep, right? Now, you gotta explain to me, why were they so tired, but we kept giving them tents? Cuz they not safe in those tents. That's why they packed them tents up and they came and sat in those buildings and they went to sleep, right? All they wanna do is sleep. I went to my mom and I said, ma, my mom has struggled with addiction my whole life. And I always go to her when I wanna understand the struggle of addiction and homelessness, cuz that woman has been through so much and made it. I think she the dopest person on the planet, outside of my wife, of course. Um, but I said, ma, why did they, why? People make it like those shelters are so unsafe. All they did was sleep, ma. And my mom told me, she said, those people don't represent the people they say they represent, because if they did, they would understand and nobody can sleep peacefully in the middle of a city in a tent, right? Nobody can sleep peacefully with plastic covering them on concrete. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and it's, uh, people, I wish people would like just know about this more, but yeah, like women get abused and all these, like, there's so much terrible shit that happens.
Oh my god, shootings. Like, people don't even understand, a lot of our shootings is coming out of homeless camps. But we're not allowed to talk about it because the homeless advocates see that it's some knock. The truth is always seen as some knock. And so if I go out and I say, um, I actually see the numbers that come out of shootings out of homeless camps and it's horrific and we have to do something, they go, well, you're talking bad about homeless camps. No, I'm not. I'm talking the truth. And the truth of the matter is they are dangerous. They are not, there's sex trafficking, there's drug dealing, and there's murders going on in these camps. And because these advocates are getting these nice big old checks to advocate, in my opinion, it's always money, then they don't want us talking about the problematic things that's coming, right? Or that's happening inside of there. So, yeah, for me, I don't care about the joint office. I don't care about the intergovernment agreement or agency or whatever they gonna call itself. I care about homeless people. And I care that they get sheltered. And then I care that we find holistic approaches for them to be able to stand on their own. And until we're doing that, we're just playing with other people's money and playing politics. And, and for the record, it's not working. I just want you to know. What's working is people getting into camps, right? Into safe rest villages and into homes that is working.
Yeah. Yeah, that's in, and you're right, like I, I forget the percentage, but there is like a very high percentage of shootings that are homeless related. And the other thing I was thinking is people bring this up a lot of like, you don't see this like tent distribution in really cold cities or really hot cities, because the people would just die like out. And the only reason they'll do it here is cuz we have a temperate enough climate to where they can survive out there, but.
You can bounce the rain off of plastic.
Yeah, but I, I totally agree with you. That's, that does not help those people in the long term.
You're agreeing with them, so you know. Because, because I'm actually talking with folks. And that's what they're saying. They're actually saying that this is not a solution to me being homeless. A homeless.
And I also think, you know, what you talked about with your mom is really important too, cuz I talked to people even on the show who I, in my opinion, don't understand addiction. Like, I've known addicts, I've, you know, I've done a lot of drugs in my life, and if you don't. Like, I've known addicts, I've, you know, I've done a lot of drugs in my life, and if you don't have some kinda understanding of that and fentanyl and like how powerful that is. Then you you're kinda missing the big picture, in my opinion.
And most of them don't. How can a career politician, for the most part, who father or mother was a career politician and they kinda got to live in the hills somewhere? How can they really understand what fentanyl is doing? We've never seen anything like fentanyl before, right? And people are dying and people are are, and so we've normalized things that kill people. They asked me, they said, Terrence. Would you support giving out needles and all that? And I told them, no. And there was this look, right? And I said, um, if I would never give my mom a needle or a pipe or foil, I'm not gonna give it to anybody else's mom. That is my love for this city, Andy. I love it in the same way that I love my mom and my dad and my sister, and I would never hand them things. I'm not exchanging death for death. If you feel like giving them these tools will help them stay alive. I'm gonna counter by saying giving those tools are actually killing them. I'm not exchanging one form of death for another, and that's what that is. And generally, um, it is mostly the higher level advocates is people that don't has never experienced it or the harm from it. They just feel really good when they talking about it.
Yeah, um, is there anything you wanna add about your Northwest story before I get into these goofy questions at the end?
No, I just wanna say, like, for me, everything I say is really who I am. I could take a more popular route, but that don't take care of people and love on people, and so I'm always gonna do my best to talk from experience. And I'm always going to people that actually know what they talking about. Um, I literally didn't have my first drink till I was forty, so certainly, right? Because I come from addict parents, so I was, I I don't think I'm better than my mom and dad. I'm their baby, right? So I, this is how I avoided that, right? And that was my lesson from my mom and my dad, was to just don't even try it. It's not worth it, right? And so when I wanna talk addiction, I talk with people that actually know what they talking about. And my opinion and my thoughts is formed by people that actually know what the hell they talking about.
Um, okay, let's say you're parking somewhere. Do you, you, any normal parking spot, do you pull in or do you back in? Or do you not care?
No, 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 I got a big old truck. And I, and I tell you, if I pull in, it's gonna take me three minutes. If I, if I back in, it's gonna be about thirty seconds. So let's, let's lean on back end, um, when I'm feeling really, really good about myself.
Yeah, I'm kinda the same way, and it feels really good when you just like nail.
I agree.
Which piece of fruit do you think you throw the farthest if you just trucked a piece of fruit across a football field or something?
Ooh, I was gonna say banana, but maybe like a, um, maybe like a papaya or something. I need something with a seed in it, you know, some weight.
I like the papaya. I've never heard papaya.
Or maybe I'm hungry. I don't know.
I like that, yeah. Uh, I I I say banana sometimes, cuz people don't believe me, and I'm like, I think it just goes.
Seed inside of that, I might get a good, you know what I mean? Few bounces too.
Yeah, I've never heard that. That's cool. Um, do you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Maybe you don't like peanut butter.
I love peanut butter, and I'm gonna go with crunchy.
Hell, yeah, that's, that's what I like too. What about stir, no stir? Do you like the?
In what peanut butter?
Oil in it or the, yeah, the?
Oh, I love it with the oil, especially if I gotta open my peanut butter up and whip that oil back in there. Yes, the work, man.
You gotta work for it, yeah.
Yeah, work for it, cuz it probably gonna tear your bread up too, but whatever. It's part of it.
Um, do you have favorite type of french fry? Do you like regular fries, crinkle cut, waffle fries?
Waffle fries or seasoned fries.
Okay, yeah, like, like the Five Guys?
Or Burger King back in the day. Man, when Burger King first dropped them seasoned fries, it was the biggest deal, but I liked them waffles fries from Burgerville. I just dip them like that in that honey mustard. Man, I think it's the best thing that's happened, man.
It's funny, but Burger King do, cuz I, most of the time I love McDonald's just as the general fry, but sometimes I like Burger King and people don't like, it's kind of a hot take. People don't like that, but.
I like it.
They're, I don't know, they're like thicker and kinda good, but um, let's say you're getting ice cream somewhere. Do you go waffle cone, regular cone, cup?
You playing. Okay, so I I go as a matter of preference, waffle cone. But when I'm feeling my healthier version of myself, I go cup. And when I don't really wanna mess and I wanna get it over with, I go cone in a cup.
Cone in a.
Cone in the.
I've never even thought of that.
You drop that thing in there, and that way you can work that spoon with the ice cream and and hit that that cone where you want it.
So you're saying upside down like this?
In a cup. It's not messy.
I like this.
Right? That's when I'm trying to, might be cheating and driving. It shouldn't be, you know what I mean? But I'll just need to get that ice cream now.
You're getting the best of everything.
Everything's in your face.
I like that.
Yeah, I try that.
And what flavor are you putting in there? Your favorite?
Ooh, I'm a vanilla guy. Um, I'm a vanilla guy for ice creams, but when it come to, um, like, like, the, the. Um, what do Dairy Queen give you a lot of?
Blizzard?
Blizzards. When it come to blizzards, I'm a Snickers guy. I like that Snickers in the Blizzard. Yeah, I gotta have that.
It's actually a good question. I should ask people what their favorite Blizzard is. I like that. Um, do you keep your butter out or in the fridge?
And I, you know what? I don't know. My wife keeps it in the fridge. I'm gonna tell you, I can't cook a lick. Like, no, no, seriously, though, like, my wife helps run my company, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm old school in a sense that I depend on that woman to eat every day. Right? Without my wife, I'm telling you to be top ramen and some gel spread, I'm telling you. No, seriously, you know, like chips and butter and meat in a, you know, you know, in a sack or something. I go back to what I know when I'm desperate, you know what I mean? But other than that, I think she keep it in the fridge. My wife is really tidy. So I don't think she won't like that soft butter on her cabinet.
It is kinda gross sometimes when you think about, yeah.
Hairs in there. They're my kids. I got two little kids. They rough. They don't respect nothing, so that butter would become a problem.
Yeah, I'm the same way. The only thing I can make is like eggs and bacon.
Survive on it. Protein, high protein.
Uh, let's see. Do you like string cheese? Do you eat string cheese?
String cheese? I don't know. I don't think there's a world where I've literally eaten string cheese. Like, I'm sure I've ate like one of, one of packs you open, but no.
I just wanna know, cuz I always ask people if they peel, cuz I just eat it. I don't peel that shit.
But I love the Twizzler peels. I would spend, I definitely blow a diet over some twi- some.
That's something that I would, I would peel, cuz, yeah, you can sit there and get each one.
Then you eat it individual. It's just a real process. I love it, seriously.
And they got all the flavors and stuff, yeah. If if you were forced, I mean, you already do have a business, but if you're forced to run a big brand like Nike or something, is there one you would wanna run?
Columbia.
Oh, Columbia Sports World, yeah.
Yeah, Columbia seems, they seem to kinda just go, right? They they quietly meet a need. Um, it's always, plus I love these, these hiking boots I buy once a year, so I'm biased, okay? They always seem to meet like these quiet needs that people that need their clothing brand do. Without being like over po- publicized and into, now they could be funding whoever, I don't know. But they seem to be quietly doing whatever they.
They're not like loud marketing.
Loud marketing is just quality, and I think I've rarely heard somebody be like, I bought these Columbia shoes and they tour up in a day. So there has to be a quality standard there, and I think that's what I like them. They're just going about the work, making a ton of money. But no one's complaining and they're not just bringing a negative impact to people lives, so that's why I would choose Columbia.
I like it. Um, did you, I always ask people, did you have a good meal recently, like a local restaurant you wanna shout out or just a business if not?
Man, you know, I love Screen Door.
Green Door, yeah.
I go there a lot for them banana waffles, them joints.
They got the, that's like the brunch.
Yeah, that's the brunch place, yep. And then, um, I think this place called Grandpa's or something like that on on Grand. They got this hash browns, um, and, oh my god, they delicious. And they got this corn brief hash and pancakes.
You love breakfast too. I love breakfast.
I am a breakfast enthusiast. The problem is, is every time I get obsessed with a, um, with a fast diet, when they be like intermediate fasting. I was just telling him, um, Paul, like, man, you feed me. I don't usually eat breakfast, but I'm like, I'm giving my food cuz I need it, right? I ain't ate breakfast in a week, but we got pancakes, and I'm like obsessed with breakfast food, so there I am, telling them myself.
Cool, um, where, so, yeah, I I will, uh, give you a donation. I always tell people because I like the match program we do here. I'll give you donation, but where can people donate and check out your stuff?
Team haze for Portland dot com. Um, yeah, and please support, like, I'm really close to the two fifty, really excited about that. Um, I seen a few reports where they like, oh, these are are the the winners so far, and I'm like, come on, man, like. Give people a chance to get there before you isolate people. But, yeah, Team Haze for Portland, you can go check out my bio. You can check out my link. I really want people, um, to donate to me because they believe in the direction I could take our city, not just cuz I'm black, man. But if you want to, I'll take it for sure.
Yeah, no, absolutely. If you like what Terrence is saying, uh, give me a donation. And, yeah, for, I think five is the smallest for the, for the match, right?
Five, I'll take it. Five to twenty. I really don't ask, like, normal people, I don't really ask them for more than twenty cuz I think that's asking. That's a big ask, right? And I'm really grateful when people give more, um, but, you know, five dollars, I think we can. Me, you can miss that cup of coffee to support me. It's fine.
Yeah, and I'll give you donation. Um, yeah, is there anything else you wanna talk about before we wrap it up?
Nope, I would just remind the city, um, that this is a unique opportunity and that we can get real everyday people into these spaces. Challenge people on the issues, challenge them on policy, they support it. Um, don't let, um, a pretty profile picture or handsome profile picture fool you into believing that they have your best interests in mind. They need to stand with what's important to our community.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks so much, man, for coming by today. This was an awesome conversation.
I appreciate you.